All right.
Pleasure, allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as is for all.
Thank you. You're welcome. I mean, before we start, I'd like to just say one quick thing. We have a new member on the board, Ed Mullen. Don McGyver was, uh, defeated Don McGyver in this past election. And I wrote a little, uh, we wrote a little article in the paper thanking Don for his five years of service. I just want to acknowledge that, um, Don was an integral part of this board. He did a great job, um, looking out for the open space and the farming interests in the town of Littleton. And he'll be missed, and I just think we should acknowledge the fact that he spent five years on this board.
I think, I, I saw the letter in the, uh, in the paper, Mark, and I think that, uh, if it's all right with the rest of the board, I think we'd direct staff to draft a letter and send it off to, um, McGyver thanking him for his services.
We just, we just put it in the paper. If you wanna, yeah, mail it to him, that's fine with me. Okay? Anyway, we have elections. We're gonna start elections. Chairman is the first one. Um, I'd like to nominate Jerry Patante as chairman of the planning board.
I'd like to nominate Richard Crowley.
I'll second Richard Crowley.
Do I have a second for Jerry? Guess not. Okay, all right. So all those in favor of Richard Crowley as chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Richard's chairman.
The ayes have it.
Okay, so we have to move on to vice.
I would nominate, uh, Peter Scott for vice chairman, as, as he did such a good job last year.
Second.
So moved, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, you could, eh, I guess you can vote please. Okay.
Better break them.
All right. And we have Clark.
Was that five?
Um, I think it was three to two. Yeah, three to two.
I voted, I voted aye on that one.
So three to two.
I nominate, uh, Ed Mullen, the new guy, give him the work. As clerk. Unless Jerry wants it.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We also have three more boards. We have the CPC.
I think, uh, you've done a great job there to begin with. I'd like to see on it.
Not interested, not interested, sorry.
Well?
Would you, would you like it?
I'm already on the steering committee, and I think I'd, I may stay with that, depending upon whether somebody nominates me for it.
Well, I'll see, so.
All right, how about Jerry?
Nope.
No?
No CPC takers, huh?
How about Ed? You want the CPC, since he's gonna take the, um, he wants to.
Master plan?
Uh, no, I'm on the, uh, the steering committee.
Master plan steering committee.
You wanna stay there?
Yeah, I'll stay there. There's a good group of people that really, uh, I enjoy it, actually.
And I'm on that master plan steering committee, too, so I, I, I wouldn't mind continuing on that.
CPC sounds exciting to me.
All right, I'll.
All right, so we have Peter and myself for master plan.
Anyone gonna?
Ed for CPC, now who's gonna do magic?
We never had anybody for magic.
Yeah, well, yeah, Don was. Well, the, actually, the town administrator is, um, one of the town's representatives. The town can have two.
Okay.
You can appoint somebody or choose not to.
Let the town administer, let Keith keep it. Wes, you wanna be on magic? You wanna be on magic?
No.
All right, so we still have to vote the other, so we have to vote Ed for CPC. I'll, I'll second Ed's nomination. All those in favor of Ed being the representative from the planning board to CPC, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, uh, I'll second Peter's nomination to be on the master plan steering committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Richard to be on the master plan steering committee as well. I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, Richard?
Takes care of the nominations.
You can have the middle of the table.
I guess Richard's here. Whoa. Well, thank you, Mark.
Welcome, Richard.
Oh, apparently we are, now we get to see who's who. Oh, Ed's, Ed gets white.
You're special.
You know what? Peter, why don't you sit here? I'll sit on the end.
I like it.
He's the vice chairman.
You're the vice, why don't you sit in the middle?
I like it here, I've been vice chairman here for two years. It's kinda fun.
Okay.
Two years?
I just thought you were gonna be in the center of the action. You get on TV more.
Well, I'm good here.
While we're still, uh, on nominations, I'd like to, um, I'd like to express my thanks to Mark for so many years as chairman on this board. He was chairman when I got on the board about six or eight years ago, uh, up until now. How many years have you been chairman?
Um, six or eight years in a row, and probably five or six before that, so, you know, probably ten or twelve years, easily.
Well, I wanna, I wanna thank Mark for his, uh, his diligence in stepping up and being chairman for as long as he's had. He's, he's led the board in a good direction all the way through. Um, under his chairmanship, we saw the point, we saw the village common district, we saw the overlay. Um, many things have, uh, have occurred under Mark's reign, and I wanna, uh, express my thanks, and if anybody else on the board wants to join me in that.
Second.
Good.
Thank you. What's stopping you here when you don't have a tape recorder? Thank you, Richard.
You're on TV.
It's on TV.
I know, I'm only kidding, thank you.
Good. Um, now we'll get to the, the agenda for today.
Richard, can I have my pen? I moved over without my pen.
Thank you. Need your sign, is it right?
Board business.
Yes, please.
Seven thirty-five, we've made the appointments, seven forty.
Okay, um, I did, I'm sorry, I had one question for you about, um, inclusionary zoning. We had talked about the possibility of a meeting in, um, on June seventeenth. Um, I tried to send out an email, I hope you got it, but I didn't get anything back at all. Um, whether or not, uh, 'cause Jenny could be available that date to meet, we're doing the evening, but, um, I'm trying to figure out if that project has any traction with you or not.
June seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
June seventeenth?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
Was it Wednesday?
Yeah.
Do, shall we invite her back?
Well, that's the question.
Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
Well, she's willing to come back, but you guys have to work to do before then. More input for her. Um, it's just very little traction. I'm not, you know, I send out an email, I don't get anything back, it's, it's difficult to do anything.
And I, I suggest we give, uh, we wait till our next meeting before we decide that? Or do you have to give a decision, uh, to, to her this week?
No. Your next meeting isn't until, um, June eleventh, so you can't wait.
That won't be enough time.
Um, if there's hesitation about it, um, we can wait.
I think we should wait. Any poll of members?
For what?
You wanna wait till, uh, June before we get Jenny back?
Well, then, at that point, we'd be scheduling her for.
Yeah, September or August.
Yeah, September, probably.
I'd rather wait so we can talk some more about on the, uh, let's see, who's got a pen? Yeah, Mark, I didn't think, I don't think I took my pen. All right, so we'll, we'll hold off on that one?
Sure, I'll let her know. Okay, so that was, that was the only question I had under, uh, the appointments and, and schedule. And then for minutes, I gave you the draft minutes from the meeting of April night.
What is the pleasure of the committee on the draft minutes?
We have no issues. Other than usual.
And do we have a motion to approve the draft minutes as, as written?
Approve the minutes as written.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
In, in the mail, I pulled out and gave you the Cooper Farm sixty-one A notice.
Yes.
Um, town council has since, um, determined that the notice was not proper. Um, I gave you that letter. Anyway, I just wanted to highlight that in, in, uh, information, let you know what came in, and I believe we're hoping, town administrators hoping for, um, conversations with the seller and to move forward with that.
So for those, those on TV, the Cooper Farm, which was discussed at the selectmen's meeting, um, is, is, uh, we're being notified here that there are some problems with the sixty-one A, or the notice for the sixty-one A. And I understand there was a problem with the purchase and sale, too.
Well, that, right.
Yeah.
Be, because of the language of purchase and sale, because it was conditional.
But the problems were not insurmountable, they were more technical and?
I don't think that, um, Tom weighs in on that at all.
Very good. Any comment from anybody on the Cooper Farm? Let's see.
Um, bills and payroll are going around. She noticed the payroll is different. Um, added five hours to my time to bring me up to forty hours a week, five hours to be, um, paid for from the master plan line item.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Ed, for your benefit, uh, Maron is putting five hours in on the, uh, on the master plan, uh, steering committee to help, uh, keep minutes for that. So that's being added, added to the, her, her normal workload for our board. Now, stone yard plan.
Okay, um, Mark had visited the site, um, on request from the conservation commission and, um, with the building inspector as well. Not to put words in his mouth, but he was pretty clear that, um, operations on the site are not in accordance, accordance with the site plan. Um, in the draft letter that I gave you, um, I tried to outline some specific areas. Mostly their operations now are much different than when they were approved. It's a different process. They're using outdoor areas. Probably not issues that couldn't be resolved if they would apply to modify their site plan, um, as far as the zoning issues are going. Um, the conservation commission has had some luck getting information back from them on, um, some impacts to wetland areas, but that's moving very slow, and so I, I believe it's time to step in with zoning enforcement as well.
So, uh, Mark, do you wanna elaborate on your, on your site visit?
Sarah called me and asked me to meet with her and Roland to go down and take a look, Sarah Seawick in conservation, to look at, um, the issues out there. Back in ninety-eight, I think was the last site plan that we did out there, and all the operations were supposed to be inside the building. They are now basically breaking rocks outside the building, creating a dust issue and creating a, um, a water issue where the stone dust is going back through the detention ponds of the little swell that's in the back of the river that's back there, and filling up a detention pond that was never even on the site plan that's built, that they built to, to collect this stuff. It's overflowing that, going into the actual detention pond, into the wetlands, and they're storing rock material. They were never supposed to be on the other side of the building. There's supposed to be a buffer between the back of the building and the, um, the residential area behind them, and it's always been an issue with the noise, and now there's trucks back there, there's material back there. They're using every square inch of the property that they can out there, and they're actually doing crushing or breaking of rocks outside of the building, which they were not supposed to do, so, uh, Roland wants some sort of letter from us saying that they're in violation of their site plan, and try to get them to come back, uh, before us to modify, do something to remedy the situation. They're creating a lot of dust and a lot of runoff into the, into the wetlands out there.
Is that something Green should look at?
Um, Green can't do anything until they actually come in to show us what they're gonna do with the site plan. They have some wetlands issues where they've gotta figure a way what to do with this, this stuff is running off the property through the, there's a brook running back there, through the brook, and into an area that they made to collect it, and before Green does anything, they have to come up and tell us how they're gonna solve that problem.
Right, and actually, the conservation commission was using Green as their peer reviewer.
Okay. And, and has Green come up with something already? Are they gonna wait until?
Not, not to address zoning issues.
Okay.
Only to address some of the drainage and siltation problems that they're having.
All right, and, uh, so the first step is us to, to stick Roland on them?
Yeah.
Yes.
That puts them on notice that they need to update the site plan.
Well, ours, our step would be to, um, direct staff, Maron, to, uh, draft a letter putting them on notice.
You have the draft letter.
There's already a letter. We have to send it to Roland. We haven't actually sent it yet.
Right, I wanted your vote to send it to him.
So. Um, we have a motion to, um, approve this letter and to send it on to Roland Burnia. I'll entertain a motion to approve the letter.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Good. All right, um, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Maron, for, for drafting this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as a matter of, um, point, I went out with, um, with Mark and Janet some years ago to examine the site, and at that point, one of the retention ponds, it was supposed to be, um, clean and clear, was, was already, had already begun silting up, and they were put on notice at that time.
Well, that was the river, there's a pond after that now. Remember, remember the little river? That's what we're talking about.
That time.
Right, so now they've actually built a pond after that, so everything runs through that river into the pond, and then into the detention pond that they built to protect it, to keep it from the wetlands, so it's even worse than it was.
Yeah, now, so, as much as we wanna have, uh, business in, in town, especially in that area of town, we wanna make sure that they comply with all the rules that we have.
Next.
Roland, do his thing.
Good.
Um, let's see. Eight fifty, almost another minute or two.
Seven forty-five, we've got the five to eleven Goldsmith Street, continuing public hearing. Number four.
Oh, there we are, yeah. Five to eleven Goldsmith Street, mixed use, water resource, special permit, site plan review. Do we have, um?
Rich, I would recommend you ask the applicants if they wanna continue with only four board members. Ed was not here during the rest of the public hearings, so he can't vote on this.
That's a very good, uh, suggestion.
Actually, Mr. Chair, um, I'd like, I'd like to just discuss something informally with the board. When we left here the last time, we had a proposal to knock down the buildings and do a twenty-two unit project in what was going to be all residential, but three of the units were going to be dedicated to affordability, and all of the units were gonna be counted in the millions, um, hosting. We were encouraged by a lot of the boards and departments and department heads to proceed along that tack, and they spent a lot of money and a lot of engineering money to do just that. And then in the final hour of presentation, it was determined by town council that under the mixed use by law, we needed to mix commercial on the same property. The applicant has gone back to the drawing board to determine how feasible that is, and economically, it truly isn't feasible to tear the building down and rebuild, uh, such a large structure and modern structure and all-new construction to have, to have a mix of commercial units, uh, given the economy today and the fact that we have a lot of empty commercial units in this town. The tragedy is that they've gone back now to the original building, um, with no rebuild whatsoever, except maybe renovations interior, so we're going to have no sort of facelift on Goldsmith Street, on that building and on that property. And they can't get the number of units they need in there to offer any affordables, and so we sit here today looking at the existing structure and the existing situation, which consists of a long building and then the smaller building in front, with really no place to go except to propose to you that we renovate the long building into apartments and the short building into commercial, so we satisfy this bylaw that doesn't really make sense, uh, on this property. The other tragedy is that, um, Gino Fratelloni, whom you all know is a huge proponent of making more housing authority-controlled affordable housing in town.
Right.
Is crying over the result of this board's decision, uh, last meeting, because now we get no units and no affordable units, and Gino has been begging us to look again at the project to see if we can, at the very least, get some single-bedroom, um, first-floor units in there for that population that the housing authority might be able to control. So, that's a long way around saying, today, we're sitting here with a plan that shows you, um, really a brand-new slate. We're gonna start from scratch, we have to go back to Green. So my first request would be to ask the board's indulgence to allow the five-member board to sit, because it's a whole new project. We're not returning to the original filing, and of course, to ask not to have to pay new filing fees, because we've already paid them. So that would be my number one approach, is to, uh, ask the board to consider whether Mr. Mullen can start from scratch, 'cause we're starting from scratch. The second is to ask the board again for a little bit of direction, because, um, while this plan before you has commercial units on the first floor in the square, I'll refer to the square building and the rectangular building, um, they don't make any sense, and it doesn't make any sense today in this economy to put retailer office space up that street on Goldsmith, and, and you, at least, Mr. Chairman, were in favor of the acknowledgement that the mixed-use bylaw, regardless how it reads, may not have been intended that each building be mixed-use. I suppose another, another way to go is since we're changing, extending, or altering a pre-existing situation, maybe they can get there through a zoning board variance, I don't know, or zoning board special permit, get there to all residential, but I guess I'm asking the board's feedback about whether this makes any sense to proceed with a commercial downstairs on one building and a residential all around it.
Well, I agree with you, that, that it is a, it is a great loss. After our last meeting, I went back to our subdivision, uh, our mixed-use, um, definitions, and when I read it, I read it and read it several times. Um, it talks about, "Mixed use shall be balanced and compatible and shall contribute to the vibrant villi-" vibrant village, and shelling, and, and, uh, "including a combination of ground-floor, street-front uses such as retail, restaurant, and offices." And it goes down to talk about exceptions. Ground floors of buildings fronting streets or public ways shall be reserved for commercial uses except as follows. And when you go down to the fourth, uh, the third bullet, it says, "Planning board," except, this is an exception, "if the planning board determines the street-front residential use will not, the street-front residential use will not have an adverse effect on the community." It basically is saying you can have street-front commercial uses.
Residential.
Resident, I mean residential uses. Now, um, where there, and then it goes on to say, um, "where these uses will not be adversely affected by proximity to street and adjacent commercial uses." So, I really believe that this is saying to us that you have to have a, you shall have commercial use, but there's an exception, that the planning board can make if the res- if, if you want residential uses on the street, you can have residential uses on the street, if it does, if it's not detrimental to the, so that's, that's actually taking, in my mind, taking place of the commercial uses that you would be required to have on the street. I don't know, Sherry. What's the, what is the sentence from the board here?
No change to any facts or circumstances from the last time we met on this, uh, I mean, I would go with Sam about that last time.
But it's, it's, uh, to me, that sentence wouldn't be there if it wasn't intended that commercial uses be substituted with residential uses.
I think council was referring to the requirements of the special permit. Right?
This is, this is under section one seventy-three, six, one sixty-six, special permit for mixed uses, special provisions, so, yes, so it, it, it is absolutely allowing the planning board to determine if street-front residential uses will not have an adverse impact on the com- on the community, on the continuity of commercial street-front uses. So it's, it, it's allowing residential uses to be out there.
If I might just add one thing to, to that sentence, it's, it's the continuity of commercial.
We have commercial.
Continuity, there is no continuity of commercial up Goldsmith, because these are residential units, so your continuity ends here.
But it doesn't allow that, it doesn't.
That's commercial.
It doesn't say where the continuity begins or, or ends.
Correct, but, but that wouldn't, proposing all residential would not disturb the continuity.
Right, right, it wouldn't. And proposing street-front residential on that street would certainly not put an adverse impact on the community. certainly not put an adverse impact on the community. So, I mean, I for one think that the old plan was workable under that interpretation. But the interpretation has to be maintained by the planning board.
Well, I think that the applicant has determined absolutely not to go back to the old plan because the cost-benefit analysis is a little bit better with this plan. There's not as much construction cost. The septic system doesn't have to be mounted quite as high so they don't have as high a wall. The old plan would have been, would have been probably fourteen marketable, market rate units and three affordables this point, which is a shame. This plan is going to be eight market units in the long building and one in the second story.
Yep.
One on the second story. So you get nine market units and then a first-floor commercial. And so the plan can be reviewed just this way. It gives you the commercial component. But I would like to have the board consider whether or not there's a benefit to the town in making those first floor, making that first-floor commercial space some other form of housing that might satisfy the Housing Authority need with one or two more bedroom units. But for now, I guess the plan ought to be reviewed this way. We're here. The drainage and parking have been calculated based on keeping the commercial on the first floor of the square building. That satisfies the bylaw in black letter. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but it does satisfy.
What is the, the number of commercial units?
One.
One commercial unit?
Or could it be two?
One to residential?
No.
Nine.
Nine residential.
Nine.
So.
No.
The square is in the front building and it's on the ground floor, just the way the bylaw says. It meets the bylaw specifically. And council's letter and council's statements at the last meeting were, he felt that you had to have a commercial component, but the size of the commercial component was within the planning board's.
Purview.
Purview. So, you know, you indicated last time a little laundry servicing, only the apartments wasn't enough. But we feel that the commercial ground-floor unit, one commercial ground-floor unit, or two, I mean, it might be two offices and they're divided. But it's the ground floor of the square building.
Are there any questions?
Ground floor of the square building.
For Sherry?
Or it becomes two affordable units and.
Isn't it a two-family house now?
Yes.
Side by each?
There's a four-bedroom in one half and a three in the other.
Okay, so put it side by side, right?
Correct, up and down.
And turn it, this other way, you're going to take the first floor of both floors, of both sides, or just one side?
We'll allow you to either have two commercial units or one commercial unit or two affordable units to the town.
On the first floor.
On the first floor.
And then the second floor is going to be one apartment.
But once again, the entire first floor of this square building will become commercial.
That's the proposal before you did it.
The second floor will turn into residential.
Or is residential.
It is residential.
We're made residential.
Well, in the future, that's what it'll be. Instead of side by side, it'll be over-under.
Well, is there any other discussion on the board? What's the poll of the board?
I don't know. Did the board decide whether I could weigh in or not before I do?
I thought that they.
I kind of agree with Sherry. The town council was pretty adamant about how he wanted to do it. I think if you're going to leave it the way it is, that's about the best we can hope for. If you're going to go any bigger than that, I still would like to see a commercial component if it's on the first floor of the square building. I guess that's the least we could live with. I'm okay with that. If you're going to go any more units and everything else like that, I think we've got to really go by what town council had to say. I think that's probably about the most innocuous way to keep everybody happy in this one, to be honest with you.
Good. Sherry, any comments?
Well, on top of what I already said, no.
Okay. Well, I guess it looks like the opinion of the board seems to be that this plan will work fine.
So my next question is whether or not Mr. Mullen can vote on it.
Oh, no, no, no. You guess. I would assume that you're going to start. Oh, you can't just.
No, no, but I mean, I'd like to know that today.
That you can, yes, I have to stop from scratch.
That we're starting from scratch so he can weigh in on this plan.
Do you have to pay for filing fees again?
No, we don't have to pay for filing fees again, but I understand.
No, no, no.
If we're all going to vote on this.
Right.
And it's now a three-to-two vote, and they're going to approve it anyway, are you going to make them come back and refile?
They have to come back and refile. He's got to be, he's got to be able to weigh in on it.
No, this is.
No, this is an amendment, excuse me, this is an amendment to the earlier plan, but it's an amendment that is a whole new concept. So I don't see why the applicant should have to refile, but I think Moran is going to send us back to green to do another peer review of this drainage on this plan.
I agree you shouldn't have to pay. I agree.
Well, if you, do you need us to put in writing that we're requesting to modify the initial plan?
Why would we notice the new project?
It's a new project. They have to start from, at least my, my humble opinion is they have to start from scratch again. It's a brand-new, it's a brand-new plan. I agree they shouldn't have to pay. It should, it should either continue the way it was or start.
The last, if you don't mind, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
Please.
If, you know, the buildings are what they're doing now, they're going to show, and again, I'm related, Matt is my brother-in-law, in case anybody has any issues knowing and wanting me to recuse myself, I will. I look at it that, am I wild about it? No, but are they meeting the letter of the law? Yeah. All right. So if they, if they put the commercial units on the first floor, we've got some, they're facing the road. That's what he asked for, right? Town council is, that's what he's determined, correct?
It was the vertical and the horizontal. That was the issue.
Well, it's facing the street and it's, it has a commercial component to it. Those are the things that were asked by, that were.
Wait, I'm confused.
Forced by Mr. Heap, correct?
No, I'm, maybe I'm confused.
Okay, where do you go?
You're proposing all residential, or you're proposing to come back with a plan that's.
This is the plan. We're here in front of you with a, for a site plan review of an existing, existing building.
The one we talked about last week?
No, no.
The one we're talking about this week. Last week was a twenty-two unit building. We were going to tear these.
Fourteen unit.
Excuse me.
Fourteen unit.
Fourteen unit. We're going to tear these down and start again. This week, we're here for site plan review of an existing building.
Oh.
That's all. We're asking you for site plan review.
We're modifying the existing buildings.
We're modifying existing buildings. We're not building anything. The footprint's not changing.
You still need a special permit on it, though.
Oh, I don't.
Why? It's site plan review.
Because you don't, you can't have twelve, eight units in a, in a commercial building. That's what it is now. It's a commercial building. You're going from.
So we need a, we need a, we need a special permit for the mixed use.
You need a special permit. We still need a special.
Which is fine, which is fine. That's.
And most likely Water Resource District.
Yeah.
I.
But we have those permits in place. We're just asking to modify the plans based on your feedback from what we presented.
Exactly. But you have to go.
What do you mean, you have the permits in place?
I'm sorry, we have those applications for permits.
So you're modifying the applications, but you still have to come through with another plan and look, we look at the drainage. You're obviously going to try to minimize the change to use the drainage that you have there, similar to plan.
Well. Sherry, is that, is that what, how you saw it?
I have no problem, I have no problem with the technical feature of having to go back to the office and fill out the paperwork for new applications. But this is the new plan. This is the new drainage. This is everything green needs. And we would ask you tonight to send this along to green so that if I make the applications, if I correct the applications or correctly.
Amend.
Correctly file amendments or modifications, they can be heard at the next hearing. Green will have his input at the next hearing, and we can possibly have the vote at the next hearing.
Whether it's a continued hearing or a new one, that doesn't change the timeline at all for the next, for the next meeting.
Right.
We can still make the.
Good.
But if you're going to use that existing building there, you're going to have to show us how the residential is going to be in it. You can't just give us a big building. You have to.
Well, that's, that's, we'll do that. But green doesn't need that for the runoff and drainage calculations.
The calculations you have already are for a much larger scoped project.
No, no, same. These plans, these plans today.
These are different.
Have the drainage and calculation.
Okay, but.
We sent them in this week, and they can go to green now.
This is different than what we looked at.
I paid the fee to green.
Previously, when you had the twenty-two units.
I was wrong.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
When you first came in.
Yes.
You had calculations for all of those, correct?
Right.
And with all of those, that would, would that have been, green saw that, and that was a much larger project than this?
Yes.
So what you're now proposing is a much lower and less intrusive.
Yeah, this is.
In my opinion, I don't see why they should give what you have to green. It's less work than it was beforehand, and then come before us with what, it doesn't seem to make, it doesn't seem like a tough question.
That's what we're trying to do.
This, this looks like to me a modification. It is a modification of your original application.
Right, but you still have to show us where the housing parts are going to be and.
Well, we'll do that for your board for the next hearing, but in the meantime, green can review the calculations.
Absolutely.
Because where the, where the interior walls are won't matter to green's review.
Right. I'm just saying we need to see a full plan when we're done.
They'll have, they'll have all that on the next round.
Well, let's just, you're asking them for it. Let's.
Move on.
But were you asking for relief from anything?
Well.
So we, I mean, specifically.
The only relief we're probably going to need on this one is parking waivers.
Yeah.
And what's shown here is not quite accurate because we misrepresented to the engineer some commercial components. So our parking waivers are going to be minimal. We're not going to have as many spaces as you would need to have commercial and residential running twenty-four hours a day. But you don't run commercial and residential twenty-four hours a day.
Sure.
So there'll be a few spaces short. And the only other relief, like water resource, which we already had in front of you, right? And.
We're going to meet it, though.
We're going to meet it. We just need that special permit.
So Sherry, are you looking, so you're looking for us to vote. So I would entertain.
We can't vote on this.
Not a vote. We're asking to be scheduled for the next meeting, and we're asking you to send this off to green.
Good.
Now.
And to poll the members, does any, any of the members have any issue with this? I certainly don't.
No, not at all. But I just, it's too bad. You didn't want to hang out for the, if we get the inclusionary bylaw written, might be able to make that work in our different special permit.
You won't pay Gary until this town goes the inclusionary bylaw.
And they just push the inclusionary bylaw a couple of months, and that makes it even worse. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a thought.
Martha, you don't have any issue with this, right?
I got no problem.
Ed, move on.
Good. Looks like we're going to see you next month.
Okay. Do you want to notice about ours, about the new plan?
Yes.
I would say probably so. Yeah.
So Sherry, I'll work with you on a notice and I'll call me on that.
The amended plan, amended plan, yeah.
The eleventh?
So you need to continue the.
And we're going to wave all the keys, right?
They're going to continue.
Yes.
What I just heard. So you need to continue the public hearing.
Yes. We are going to continue the public hearing.
Somebody make a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
All right, we're gone way past.
That's going to be a good question.
What?
Probably eight fifteen, but we'll have.
All right.
Touch base. That's Saturday.
Three thirty, King Street Congregational Church, modify the Aquifer District special permit and site plan amendment. Do we have a proposal here?
We do.
We do. Thank you. Yep.
I don't get it.
Moran, I like the separation on the, on the different things.
I'm still confused.
Great.
You're opening up enough to do it this time.
Yeah, thanks for letting me know that it works. I was trying to figure some way to.
This is beautiful. Yeah.
I'm going to try to get some senior help in so I can continue to do that. It was a little time-intensive.
Prior to, prior to this meeting, Ed, we, it was one package. Now it's, now it gets its separations in there.
I think last time I was on this project, Peter got up and left.
Probably. Nothing against.
Or maybe it was the other project.
Nothing against you. All right. Do you want to give us some, some background?
Do you open a new public hearing?
Okay. Who's got the, who was our clerk? Oh.
Oh, boy.
Ed, your duty.
First official duty.
Yep. Read our public hearing.
Public hearing, Aquifer District Special Permit, three thirty, King Street. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May fourteenth, twenty fifteen, at eight p.m. in room one oh three at Town Hall at thirty-seven Shattuck Street to consider an application to modify a special permit pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, in the code of the Town of Littleton Zoning, Aquifer and Water Resource District. Property location, I already read that, right? Three thirty, King Street. This application is to modify an existing Aquifer District Special Permit to allow phase improvements to the proposed building addition and associated, associated site improvements, including parking. Applicant plan, plans can be viewed at the planning board and town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated.
Very good. You're on, you're on deck.
Sit this over so I can get next to it. Good evening. For the record, Bruce Ringwall from GPR, representing the Congregational Church of Littleton. As you know, they're under construction, doing work right now based on the permitting we did a year ago. In between, prior to that permitting, for a little bit of background, they had hoped to have a bigger parking lot and then use all the space that they had been using, including the grassed area at the end. The parking, the addition to the building proposed on, on this side of the building, the addition was proposed over here towards Rakowski's property, right here. And that part, and all this parking, put them in a budget that was over what they had raised and where they were headed towards. In the process of the whole thing, when the numbers came back in, this addition was just way over the top of where they were headed to. So they got looking at why they started originally, which was at the parking and renovating the internal portions of the building. And they brought their scope back down and they moved forward. In the process of all that, as we've watched the fuel prices come down, along with that, the asphalt prices have come down. And so they've reevaluated where they're at and want to complete their original goal, which was to create this parking lot across the site. It came to about here. We shortened it up a bit and made it more compact and economical to get as many spaces as we could in within their previous budget. And now they're shooting for this portion over here. What we had permitted with you before was all of this work into two phases. The first phase was dealing with the church internal structure, the new entry, getting rid of all this asphalt out front, a much smaller drop-off area, a new entry area, replacing this culvert and doing about this much pavement. Phase two was going to be to balance the pavement off. Phase one also included this stormwater management area. All of that work was less impervious area than they had currently. But we were looking at the big picture of the whole thing. And so what we did with the big picture is, is we went to the Rakowskis' next door, and we acquired an easement of a strip of property across the back of this, which I apologize, Moran, because I said I was going to email that to you and I haven't yet. That easement has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds to provide to the church additional land area so that we can do this work and all of this, including this addition, and have less impervious area on the site than, percentage-wise, than we would before we started. We're at that point. The issue right now is, and what we're proposing tonight, is this additional parking here, which means a little bit of additional grading in this area, changing of a landscape island. We're still not planning on building this addition. We're still not planning on building this addition. We've got it in the permit, we wanna keep it there, we'll renew it if the church moves forward and gets to that point, but we're not planning on building that in the foreseeable future. Because on the site, we have increased now our impervious area over what we were initially without the easement on here, but from the standpoint of stormwater management, we were in a redevelopment zone and now we're out of that because now we're making more development of the impervious area than we had previously. So before, we had a bioretention basin here, bioretention basin here, and we were treating this runoff to here and this runoff to here. We did not have to do any recharge at that point in time because we were in remediation in less impervious area than what we had. Now we're over that, so now we have to have some recharge. Recharge in this area is near impossible unless it was done way up close to the road because those of you that have the history in town recall that this area is all fill. This is fill from when they remodeled the prison in Concord. This is lots of concrete and bricks and iron bars in this area.
No prisons, I hope.
No, well, we hope not. They're not talking if they are. As you well know, you can't recharge in fill, you have to recharge in institute material. So what we've done is over on this side of the property, we're picking up the sanctuary roof by existing downspouts, connecting those downspouts underground and putting in a recharge galley over here. So we're covering our recharge for the stormwater management and Littleton's BMP guidelines for taking care of that there. By increasing the stone underneath and around it, gives us enough storage capacity to also pick up this future roof. So we've got a stub that we're gonna leave in the ground here so that when and if that ever happens, the drainage will all be in place. I'm holding you guys to remember this when I come back five, 10 years from now and do this again, but the drainage will all be in place for the recharge for that, that piece. Over here, the new impervious area that puts us over the top is being collected in this new bioretention within this island. It has a stone strip around it and it goes into this bioretention area and then it discharges into this bioretention area. And we had to take the one that we had previously permitted and slide it back just a little and lower it so that instead of having this kind of grade elevation difference, we have this kind of grade elevation difference so that the outlet from this pipe, from this system can go into here. Because these are all lined underneath so that we're not getting credit for recharge and the efflu, the water from here, once it gets treated, then goes into this basin and it gets treated again. So this is, works as pre-treatment for this basin. And then we have a stone strip along the edge of this pavement and by moving this back, it allowed for a grass strip along that, gives us the pre-treatment for the overflow to here. So you got a review comment back from Corey from Littleton Light and Water, and he said, hey, I realize it's a tight site, but you're not quite making it because when I submitted the plans initially, the drain from here tied into this drain underneath the basin, so I had mostly treated and mostly treated, but not treated to the 80% required. Now we're at 89% treatment for the runoff from this area and meeting the requirements of both Littleton and the state guidelines. Corey's reviewed it and he's sent to Maren a thing that says, yep, like this much better. So that's what's here, I've given updated plans to Maren, so she has those there. That's the gist of the whole thing. Also, because we've gone from the 85 or 86 parking spaces to, I think it's 109 now, we went from four handicap spaces to the requirement for five, that's why this area was marked up in here because assuming that that area was paved already, we'd have to modify the grades in there just a slight little bit. They're at about 3%. Parking space for handicap has to be 2% or less, so we had to do some modifications to the grades in here and for the accessway across for the handicap access into the building. So that in a nutshell is what's here, balance of the sheet to the road control, the details for the basins and a lot of the details that were there before. This detail's been modified for the new grades relative to these two basins. That basin is already constructed, that lines in, the building is in really good shape. The hopes, if everybody, if they raise the money that they're after, is to have the, all site work done by, I think, the middle and end of August. So they're, they're lining everything up, they're moving forward on it. I am for the Conservation Commission for these modifications as well. We had a meeting this past Monday night, we're gonna meet on June 1st. I'm doing a site walk with them tomorrow afternoon to show them these corners and these corners and the work over here on the site. Hopefully we'll close that on June 1st and hopefully the folks will approve this and they can move forward with it.
Does anybody have any questions for Bruce?
What's your percent impervious now?
Our percent impervious would go from pre-existing of 44.6 to 43.7.
So it's dropped.
How can it drop if you're adding-
Because we picked up that easement across the back of the Krokowski property.
Didn't you add that easement when we did it the first time?
Nope.
No.
Added it afterwards.
No, we talked about it and-
Talked about doing it.
Yeah, hadn't made the deal with Krokowski by then.
Krokowski.
And providing you put this full space driveway in there, a parking lot, and then does this include, I think you said it did, but does it include the new addition off the right?
It would include, includes not only the entryway that has already been constructed, but it includes this future addition. All of my impervious numbers include absolutely everything.
They're doing something like a pyramid and a sphinx inside or whatever, because they've been working on it for two years, I think, haven't they?
No, it's just, it's just been from last fall that they started. Their hopes were to start early last summer. A lot of issues with the fundraising, realizing that they were over budget, cutting back, did a whole lot of things to cut back. But if you've been inside that building, they've gone downstairs, they've tore up the floor, they've new under, under the building drainage, they have bee blasted all the stone walls and waterproofed them and done a new sheet rock, the whole kitchen's been torn out, everything's been, everything's been done over inside. Not in the sanctuary, but in the, in the classrooms, the RD classrooms and in the parlor hall and the offices, it's all been rebuilt.
Yeah. So Bruce, we're looking to, let's see.
We have a special permit for the work in the Aquifer Protection District, for the Aquifer Protection District, have a special permit for over 100 parking spaces and a site plan modification. And those first, the first special permit, Aquifer is a modification and the site plan's a modification. So three items, right, Maren?
Sounds right.
Now.
I think that's great. I can do my cheat sheets.
Our action is to open it, open the public hearing.
You did.
And vote on whether the, this application requires peer review.
Okay, um, I did send it over to Green, they gave an estimate of over $3,000 to review it. Corey Godfrey from the Littleton Water Department has taken a pretty detailed look at it and he's fine with it. Bruce mentioned that he made some changes based on Corey's review where it's a fairly minor modification to a plan you had previously approved. That's why I didn't automatically send it over to Green.
Do, I, I personally don't think that we need to send it off to Green. I think this is, it's a small enough project and the, and it's been going on a while, it's been before us before. Mark, do you have any issue?
I think the board needs to weigh in on the easement in the back. Previously, anytime we've, we've added land to, to keep our percent impervious below our threshold, the applicant owns the property. This will be the first time that we're actually, you know.
We had this conversation.
We had, I was gonna say, we had this conversation quite a bit previously.
So we need to weigh in whether we're gonna leave it as an easement, which we need to make the determination. This is the first time in my recollection that we've ever used an easement. It's usually the ownership of property. I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna make sure that we cover it because it's an issue because it's gotta go with, it's gotta go with the land.
But a bylaw doesn't preclude us from allowing that.
Yeah, what happens if they're not friends later on if somebody else buys the property? Is this easement in perpetuity?
No, it's filed, bro. You see filed and recorded.
Yeah.
The easement has been filed with the property.
Yeah.
And it is set up to run with the property. We had conversation about this before and the biggest issue that came up before was always that it had to be relative to the, you'd be giving resource protection when you were in an aquifer protection district. If you were in an aquifer, if you were in a resource protection district and you had aquifer protection district land that you were preserving and keeping out of development, then those are all good things. This strip is immediately adjacent to the property, it's right here. It's, I think, 18,620 feet or 18,6260 feet, I can look it up for you. But it, it is entitled to the land and it has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, 18,260 square feet.
Maren, has, has town council had a chance to read in on the easement?
Um, do you want me to send it to him?
I don't think we need to bother him with that if it's already registered to the Registry of Deeds and, you know, I don't, I don't wanna be spending money on the, on the, personally paying a-
It's, this, all of this is, is something that was predicted to happen last time it came before us.
Correct. Well, it's proposed, yeah.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we had a problem with it at that time, but-
No, yeah, I don't think we did either.
They didn't really weigh in on it because they never had to do it. Now the issue is whether or not you're going to allow people to actually not own the land as part of an easement and use it as an easement, use it as open ownership, that's the only reason I bring it up.
So what's the risk in the event that they sell their land?
Mr. Krokowski sells his land to somebody else and they wanna take the easement off?
They can, if it was a-
They can have.
No.
If, if it was a license, then they would have the right to revoke it. An easement is, is yeeting over an easement for use of that property and the use of that property is for no building construction or not by either party, to remain as open space to, it spells out specifically, for the purpose of meeting the Aquifer Watershed Protection District bylaw.
Yeah, so that's, that, to me, that-
You can rescind an easement.
You cannot release an easement.
You can rescind an easement.
If I grant you an easement-
Yep.
And give you an easement for whatever across my property, I cannot take that easement away. You can rescind that easement.
That's my point.
The church can rescind it, the Krokowskis' cannot.
Yeah.
So why would the church rescind it?
So why would the church? The church couldn't rescind it because then they would be in violation.
That's, that's right. And, and not only that, that if they did rescind it, then they'd have to come back to us anyway.
I'm only bringing up the fact that it's always been ownership. Now we're doing an easement, I just wanna make sure the board weighs in that they don't have a problem with it.
And just for the record, I thought they also have the option of finding a non-contiguous land swap in another part of town if that was gonna leave it, that was another option.
They were back originally, they were talking about, not almost the high school.
This is actually, it's contiguous.
Yeah, this makes more sense.
I just wanna make sure that they weigh, it's never been in the, whatever.
All right, for the fifth time, would you prefer the town council to look into it?
No, not at all.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion to accept it, to close-
Close the county hearing.
I'll second.
Close the public hearing. Any, any discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. All three, all three.
On the acceptance of the three.
With conditions or without conditions?
With-
Gentlemen, how you doing?
Good, my existing conditions.
Yeah, but we have, we have a special, special permit for Aquifer District and we have a special permit for site plan modification.
You have draft decisions.
Yeah, so we'll, has everybody looked at the, the draft decisions? Do we have any issues with the conditions on the draft decisions? These are pretty standard hazard, no hazardous chemicals on your Aquifer Special Permit, site plan modification.
Do you see anything that we're missing here, Lauren?
The discussion about the easement should remain in perpetuity, I would add something like that.
We can add that to the site plan modification.
I would recommend adding that to the special permit as well, so all the conditions for each decision are the same.
Very good. All right, so we'll take a vote on the special permit and then the site plan mod, modification, then close the hearing. Or, close the hearing and then-
Close the hearing, yep.
And then our draft decisions.
Make the motion to close, we already closed, correct?
Oh, we had a motion in a second.
We got a, we got a-
No, all, all in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
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 Now, do we have a motion on the Aquifer Special Permit as modified with the condition of including the language on the, on the easement?
In perpetuity. I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Now we have a site plan modification. Any questions on the site plan modification?
No. Should that include everything within perpetuity as far as the site plan and no hazardous waste storage, all the other things that we usually throw in with that?
Yep, there, there.
That would be in there, Maren?
Yeah.
Yep, there, there.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan modification. A second?
Second.
Good. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Is that the, all of them or is there one more?
I believe that was all.
For the special permit on the 100 cars.
I think that was-
Uh, I got one.
I think it was rolled into the-
The site.
So you added the use and-
The site plan modification.
So you're packing your bags and you're leaving or you got more for us?
Bruce?
I'm the next item.
You're, you're going, you're on a roll here.
Double dip.
All right, next.
Double header, double header.
All right, double header, please, yes. I'm here now representing Soaring Hawk, formerly known as the Fort Farm Wellness Center, for a discussion of conceptual use and conception relative to how the board would like to move forward towards permitting what the applicant wishes to do on the property. The applicant has come before you before this time a year ago, then I was back this past winter for modifications. Initially, we proposed some parking in front of the building off of the, the existing paved driveway and then we came back and proposed some parking behind the building without this piece right here, in the back area here, and eliminated this area of front.
Bruce, before you- For the people watching-
Oh, certainly.
Could you identify where this parcel is?
Sorry, bud. This is at 547 Great Road. This is at the corner of Beaverbrook Road, Great Road 119 is here and this is the old Great Road stub that comes down and ends right here. So this is the large white farmhouse formerly the Fort Farm House for Town of Littleton back some years ago.
Great, thank you.
The owner is set up for a wellness center, meditation center for the property and in the, that is the main goal and use of the property Monday through Friday morning, I guess, or Monday through Thursday, Sunday through Thursday, because Sunday she wants to have meditation events, things throughout the day. In the process of the whole thing, to help offset costs for meditation and some of the different things that would be going on during the week that are not as much of fundraisers or money revenues, she's looked into and would like to have the ability of conducting weddings on the property. Functions possibly Friday evenings, weddings on Saturdays. The initial plan was to maintain this garage in, in the shape that it was and redo it internally. What we're looking at now is the, there's a section back here of the building between the garage and the house that has no foundation and then the garage itself has some issues relative to the foundation. And so what we'd like to do is remove that portion and build up in the same architectural char- character of what's there. An addition, this addition was in the, the shape coming out this way, but there's a very large, I think oak tree right here that they're trying to maintain. So, they looked at angling this building from this angle now. This space would be used for the meditation and different functions during the week, but also would have the ability to be used for functions for weddings. Inside weddings, she'd like to be able to handle upwards of about eighty to a hundred people, and then if she were to have more than that outside. Now, she is advertised, would advertise, hasn't yet, would advertise towards people that are coming there for meditation and the various different exercises in yoga and different things that would happen within the facility. She has put together a whole string of guidelines for activities on the site if this can move forward that would severely limit what would happen outside. If there was a large wedding outside, it would be in this lawn area under a tent. It would be no amplified music. There would be no parking on Beaverbrook Road. There would be an officer or a moron site. We'd have parking here, parking here, which are necessary for the increased meditation services on the site. But she has been in conversation with a couple of the properties next door to rent parking from them on Saturdays for Saturday events, so as to keep traffic off of Beaverbrook Road, keep it on the Great Road portion of the site. Handicap access would be through here, as it is for the meditation facility. The caterer would come in through here, and it would meet all these things. With this full build-out, with any, all the areas that are shown as impervious, we go to sixteen point eight impervious on the site. We are in an aquifer protection district, while number two is right up in the back corner behind Dover Salary, so we would be a special permit. The big thing that I need to talk with you all about this evening is how to go about permit. I've had conversations with Roland, with Warren, I've had some brief conversation with Mark, I've had some conversations with Sherry from the ZBA standpoint. Looking at this from the standpoint of the zoning table, there is not an exact use. There are churches in town that have weddings, there are lodging facilities that have weddings, but we don't have a function facility as such. What we do have is other principal uses with exterior, externally observable attributes similar to uses permitted above, which is a special permit from the Board of Appeals. That's the way I've been sort of directed to do this, but I want to make certain that the board is of that opinion and that that's the way that they'd like me to go forward, or would they like me to go forward with an application that can be heard here whereby I look at the motel use and hotel use and I look at a restaurant. Those really aren't the uses other than those things would happen. There would be no food prepared here, it would only be brought in by a caterer. There would be nobody lodging overnight. As part of this thing, we would be removing the instructure apartment that we had originally proposed on the property.
Phil, you're, you're well within the master plan allowed uses. It could, you'd fit into community hall, you'd fit into restaurant.
If he were in the overlay B district, that would be true.
Oh, he's just outside it, that's right.
This is the edge of the overlay district right here.
Right, okay. Okay, I see the problem. I, I don't really have an issue. Does anybody on the board have an issue?
Is there a septic issue with this?
There is a septic issue with this, but we have, we have an approach that is permissible under Title V in the Board of Health. I've met with Mr. Griffey. I have not gone to the Board of Health yet because I need to take a step with the state first, but in keeping with maintaining the character of the property and maintaining the character of the building and the site and the environmental approaches that the owner has, we're looking at using composting toilets. They make a commercial composting toilet with, with a foam flow that you've probably seen at some places. That would be for the toilets within the building, all of it within the building. They'd have three composting stations down in the basement. There'd be very limited water use from hand washing, and that would go to a very large septic system that's on the site right now. This septic system was permitted when the former owner was looking at putting in a warehouse in the back that was, I think, I want to say five thousand square feet or so. This is just shy of an eight hundred gallon a day septic system. So, when you take out all of the black water from the site, you have just gray water, we're very close to meeting what we would need on the site, and we'll be approaching the state and the Board of Health to talk about those items.
So, wait, what's your ask?
What's that?
What's your ask?
What my, what I'm asking here is two things. I want to have the conceptual discussion about the secondary use to the property and to get the board's agreement on the approach. The approach that I've generally discussed with a number of folks would be that we go for a special permit from the Board of Appeals relative to use. Simultaneously, be before this board for a site plan, special permit approval for the modifications to the site, and the, the special permit for going over fifteen percent to sixteen point, whatever it was, eight percent of impervious area.
Are you working towards this becoming a religious?
No. She asked if that would work because I said you can't make a church, so we're, no, we're not going that way.
Can't make a church?
Nope, can't make a church. Can't come up with a religion without a lot of work that we're, we're not doing. And it's not a nonprofit. That was one of the things that we discussed with Roland as well.
And it's not a nonprofit.
It's not a church.
It's not a sweat lodge.
Does anybody on the board have any issue with the, with the use?
Filing a use approach.
It doesn't need what we intended it to be. The reason we didn't put this in the overlay district was to buffer the people on Beaverbrook because this is an industrial, this is on industrial. So, that's flying in the face of why we didn't do part of the overlay district. It is not a hotel, it's a meeting, it's a place of meeting.
It would be for function.
It's a place of meeting, so you're parking, it'd be no different than what we had to do up at the restaurant up in town where the Jazz Cafe is now. You're going to need a deeded parking lot within three hundred feet of this property. And you, and I think town council's going to have to weigh in whether a place of meeting is allowed use in the industrial district.
Well, it's not as it, let me rephrase that. It's, uses are similar, similar uses are permitted. The restaurant, the motel, the lodging, and the events that occur in those places are permitted in the industrial use right now. So, under your bylaw, other external similar places can be permitted by way of a special permit.
It's not.
It's not, no. But it is a use that occurs within a hotel.
The hotel.
Hotels are on events.
Hotels aren't allowed in the industrial.
That, that part of the, his application he's proposing to take to the appeals board.
That's correct.
That's what he's saying.
I get that, but we have to decide whether we want to support him, him asking for, he's asking for use variance at the Board of Appeals.
I'm not asking for use variance, I'm asking under your categories within the use section, other principal uses with externally observable attributes similar to those permitted above. And it's allowed to occur if those things are, have things that are similar in here above that are allowed within the industrial district. So, I'm not varying outside of what the uses are that are allowed within the district. I'm just asking for this specific, excuse me, the specific use to be permitted on site, and I'm going to the ZBA to ask for that. Simultaneously, I believe, unless you want me to do one before the other, I would come before your board for a special permit for the aquifer protection district and a site plan modification to modify to do the things that were proposed, do with the drainage, deal with everything else. So, the site issues would be here.
Didn't we do the overlay district so that hotels were allowed in industrial?
But this is not the overlay.
This is just outside the overlay.
So, then it's not allowed in the industrial as it is now.
Mark, if you go up further into the chart, it is one of the uses that has a, is permitted by the planning board. Motel Hotel Conference Center, IA District permitted. By special permit by the planning board.
But this isn't that.
This is industrial A, so, yeah.
This would be along the lines of a conference center or function.
Yeah, see.
It's the only thing you have in your bylaw that's similar.
Hotel Hotel Conference Center.
See, what, what Bruce is proposing here, this is an industrial district, so you could put a car manufacturing plant in there.
Not a warehouse in there.
You can put lots of things in there that are heavy industry. Now, what Bruce is proposing is something that's not, not even towards the heavy industry side of the spectrum, it's towards, towards the, you know, the, almost the residential side of the spectrum as it, as if it were a church.
We, we look at it as a good buffer zone, a, a good transition zone between what is proposed and allowed to be able to happen in the multi-use overlay district versus the many uses that can happen in the industrial district. We want to maintain this house, we want to maintain the character of the property that she has brought on a landscaper, they want to, they're going to start moving, cutting out the invasive vegetation that's taken over the backyard, start dealing plantings and stuff now. For the permit that exists, one of the things I want to talk about is she'd like to get the driveway cleaned up and get this coming in. So, she has stuff ready to go on the permits that we have currently, and then expand upon that by filing with you folks. So, she's, it's going to be a nice property, it's going to be a plus site to the community.
It's, you know, if you look at what's allowed there, something much heavier than what they're proposing here.
It doesn't matter what, Richie, what they, what could go in there, so what they're asking to put in there.
Exactly.
So, let's, are there other neighbors that can you do that?
Do we have comments from the?
I live at thirty Beaverbrook Road on Margaret Lina.
Yep.
And I've talked to all the neighbors, and we love the idea originally of the meditation center and protecting the house and all the expansion and everything. But then when the wedding proposal came, and we all got emails about it, we were a little concerned about noise.
Exactly.
Especially noise at night. The people across the street, the Torellas, that have a serious health issues going on, serious health issues, and so we're worried about drinking, alcohol, parking for a hundred and fifty people, there's a lot of cars. Where are they going to park? Is it all on the, you know, where are they going to park? I'm happy that you mentioned the, you know, the industrial area instead of along Old Great Road.
Right.
Because that would be right by the neighbors. So, the noise is the big issue. Other than that, you know, it sounds like a great idea.
The noise is an issue for her as well. I mean, the meditation center, I raised the issue with her. She's prepared a whole series of guidelines for the property. No parking on Beaverbrook Road, no out, no outdoor amplified music, acoustic outdoor music must cease properly at, and she's listed at ten for suggestion. Anything that's outdoor activity would have to move inside at ten or before, you know, it's trying to set the thing up so that it works well with the neighborhood. She's going to be enhancing the landscaping, and this is already varies between sixty and eighty feet of vegetation between the property and the, and the road.
What's the elevation drop between the road?
The elevation drop from the road, this is, well, in the neighborhood of two hundred and sixty right here, and this is two forty-four right here.
Twenty feet.
Twenty-four.
I mean, I live right behind the high school, and I have a similar drop-off. When the band's playing, you can hear it loud and clear. Other than that, you can't hear anything at the high school, except for maybe a little crossroads.
You're higher than the school.
I'm higher, and I'm higher, that's what I'm saying, so. Unless it's really, really loud.
These, these are, they are higher than.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm up here, school's down here. So, unless it's really loud at the school, I mean, I mean like marching band loud, you can't really hear anything. I'm assuming you have a similar acoustic.
She totally wants to work with the neighbors and, and come up with, you know, a game plan that works.
Perhaps an earlier end time than ten o'clock at night.
What we were thinking is, you know, let's try it. If it becomes a problem, can we talk about it and, and then adjust the noise issue? There's really noise. Slamming car doors here at eleven o'clock, people drunk.
No cars will be on that street. There'll be no parking on your street.
No cars will be on that street, there'll be limited parking here, this is thirteen parking spaces here.
Has anyone tried buying that land back from the state where they, where they took the curve out?
We have not.
So, so this is, this is actually a decibel level that's allowed in, a maximum that's allowed in residential. I think it's about fifty, fifteen, fifty or sixty.
What about the sportsman's club? I live across from that.
No control.
Way higher than fifty.
That's a different issue.
Well, what are they going to do when that happens all Saturday?
And they start using guns at weddings?
I hope.
We're going to Texas now.
There might be.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's similar, like at the Stony, they, they were exceeding decibels, and so we, we went over and we made them add buffering and so forth. In this case, it would, they'd have to change some of their operation. Because you can't.
No.
No, 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 this, this, we're not talking about the enforcement.
Right, if you have a zoning complaint, you need to take that to the zoning enforcement officer. It's not through this one.
This, this is the issue on the table right now.
I make a motion to accept.
Well, this is.
We don't have an application, this is an informal discussion.
Oh, it's informal.
You're here for informal, Bruce, right?
We could be done tonight.
You're, you're here for informal tonight, right, Bruce?
I'm informal.
I, I kind of like the idea. Anybody else?
Does anybody want to send Bruce away with any kind of special instruction?
John, Mr. Clyde does.
Oh, Jimmy.
Just because of the parking issue, it should be if you move forward with this, that I don't have to install no parking signs all over the place. That would be part of their permit.
That's, that's a good point.
You're going to have to show us how they get into wherever you're going to park and how they're going to get from there to the, to the event, so they're not going down Great Road, even that old Great Road, you know? Because obviously, the stuff further down can't go down.
This is, this is all lawn right here, and it's lawn right across to the parking lot that's right here.
Good. Now, when you say no parking, you say no parking on Beaverbrook Road or no parking on?
No parking on Beaverbrook.
Can't open.
Well, that still is a very large parking area, Great Road, old Great Road. That's a hundred plus yards long and.
And we're not, we're not looking to make that a parking space, you know? Will overflow parking occur there from time to time? It's possible. We're going to be directing as part of the thing to direct people to the lots that they get to rent, which we have to have a deeded easement per the bylaw to use adjacent parking.
Over at Dover Salary?
Not that far down. They, they work twenty-four hours a day, so we can't use that lot. But some of these other lots adjacent, she's in there, she's in conversation with Nishova Air and the electrical property.
Do we have a question from the audience?
We haven't solidified anything, we're in conversation with them now.
Do we have a question?
Yes, a technical question.
Could you identify yourself?
Michael Zeldin, eleven Loans Street. The question is, follow along the lines that Mark brought up, and the question is general. Are there any other overlay areas in the town in which a buffer zone is specified other than in addition to the one to?
I don't believe so. I think this was created at the time we created the overlay.
No, there is also the hundred and fifty feet setback from the boundary line between residential properties and industrial properties.
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, that too.
And that does occur in this, and that's why you need to apply a special permit.
That's correct. And that, that's part of, we came in for a special permit for a modification in here to the building because this is the hundred and fifty foot line, and we would be back to modify that because the deck would be a larger deck, and we're terror, adding in more building space in there so that there's a better airlock and space for the bathrooms.
The grassy area that you, to the left looks like a swimming pool.
This.
Is this where you intend to put the tent?
That would be where the tent would go if we have a tent, that's correct.
So, to answer the questions, this is the only overlay with a buffer zone so specified?
The, the overlay is, is next to it, and this was declared a buffer zone.
The overlay district starts right at this easterly, southeasterly property line.
I think you're using the wrong word. You don't mean overlay, you mean there's, there's a, there's a delineation from residential to industrial, and that's a. I think you're using the wrong word, you don't mean overlay, you mean there's a delineation from residential to industrial, and that's a 150-foot buffer.
Yeah.
That's... And what I'm concerned about is not the specifics of this one, but the general notion that randomly, that's what's happening with this, is with a lot of these projects, is that you run into, someone wants to do a project that basically goes into an area designed to show, say, ease a transition between one kind, in this case residential, and another kind, in this case industrial. But who knows what the future looks like, and I'm concerned about the precedent of running through an intention.
I see your question. This lot is zoned industrial, not residential. And so when we...
Right up to Beaverbrook.
Yeah, so...
It's the... It's the point that Mark was making.
The 50... It's a 100-foot buffer from residential to industrial. What he's trying to get at is that there's supposed to be a 100-foot setback before you can do anything from the residential to the industrial. He's asking if we're encroaching on that and how we're encroaching on it, both from Beaverbrook and from...
Thank you.
I can put parking right up to 20 feet to this property line. Clear this whole area of vegetation and put parking right up to that area. It's not what we're proposing to do. We're trying to keep the site as the way the site is. Maintain vegetative buffer, enhance the vegetative buffer, get rid of invasive plant material, bring in more native plant material. There's a lot of really nice plant material on the site, transplant it, move it, put it into other areas. Use a lot of the granite material that's on the site to attribute to the landscape. Maintain the character of the house, add to the house some additional structure, limit the parking onsite to 30 cars, 30 parking spaces. Have it spread out in several different areas from accessibility points onto the building, and then enter into agreements for additional parking outside.
But is the 150, I'm sorry, is the 150 feet don't-touch zone, or is it no building within the 150 feet? No structures?
It says no building structure within it, the existing building is...
No structure, period.
The existing building is 79 feet from the property line of Great Brook Road. From this side, it's over 150 feet, this is the 150-foot line.
Well, that's pre-existing, that's not my issue. But the 150 feet is nothing is touched within 150 and no structure inside the 150.
No structure.
No structure.
So, what he's asking?
The parking.
And the parking, as he's...
You could do the parking.
Okay.
And if I may, there's a clause within the bylaw, right at the bottom of that chart, that allows you to come before the board for relief down to 50 feet.
Yeah, I believe that was used up on the... All right, so...
It was used on several sites down further down the road.
We need to...
Sell storage.
Sell storage on...
There it is.
Yeah, I think each of the buildings coming up.
Okay, so be it.
Yeah, we need to move on. Any other instructions for Bruce before we say thank you?
Do we want to do a simultaneous application here in the ZBA, or do you want me to go ZBA first? I mean, how do you want to go?
It would be my recommendation to go to the ZBA. I think one thing you want to have in hand when you go there, though, is the deeded parking from the neighbors.
And if you don't get relief from them, there's no reason to come to us, correct?
Correct.
That's...
I agree with it.
But they're also gonna want to have some input from you as well. Input from us in regards to, I mean, I was thinking of simultaneous filing, you know, but...
Usually we do it simultaneously.
What's that?
We usually have done it in the past simultaneously, it's up to you.
This, our bylaw recommends a simultaneous, but...
Okay.
Okay, I'm honored. I appreciate your time, gentlemen and lady.
Wow, thank you. So...
Next.
What's next?
120, 130 Goldsmith Street, informal discussion again, residential development, Steve Marsh, you're back.
Yeah.
Yes, on Goldsmith Street again, too.
Yes, for the rest of it.
That's right. You'll have to, could you give some background on this as we get into it?
Sure. We have a, we had a 40-acre parcel of land, Steve Marsh for, pardon my pardon, we had a 40-acre parcel, we broke it off into different parcels. One 6-acre parcel became an eight-unit 4D project. That was six acres with the majority of the, a good portion of the land put into a conservation restriction on the back part. We took the existing farmhouse and converted that into condominiums, and so that's been completed as well. And now we have 22 acres remaining, which we're proposing five house lots. So that's what we're here for tonight. And again, this is just the informal, I met with Maren a few weeks ago with the engineer, and wanted to come in before the board. I'd just give you a little bit more history, too, we have dealt with natural heritage, and I did have an enforcement order from the Conservation Commission, which we, since we sold, that's been two years in the making, so. A portion of this property down the middle strip, if we have the plans, will be protected with an arrangement with natural heritage. We can do six lots by right, we only want to do five.
And you'll have a town-standard access road?
We would, yeah, what we would like to do is keep it private, you know, I called Jim today to discuss that, to have our roads private in way of construction, go through the subdivision, so everything needs zoning for a conventional subdivision. So on paper, and then ask them to, but we would like to keep the road private, not have the town take the burden, I don't know what Jim's position is on that.
But you'll still meet the subdivision rules?
Absolutely.
Gerbing sidewalks, trees, all that?
Well, we meet, yeah, but we want to landscape it differently, because we think that it's gonna look better, more of an equestrian-type project versus just a standard subdivision that looks like a regular subdivision.
Nice. This is the lot, this is the parcel that was a former horse farm.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And so, and staying with that, and I read a while ago, I forget where it was, part of your master plan, it said a little bit, that we wanted to keep that agricultural appearance in the distance, so part of this land does, above the Cooper piece, up in the back. And again, you know, you can see this from Route 2A, a good portion of this. So again, that back portion would be left essentially untouched, a good portion of it, with the exception of two dwellings. But we want to make those two lots in the back big enough, so if somebody wanted to have horses...
Those two lots being four and five?
That would be correct, yes.
And then the other area around that, on this side?
It's lot five and six, lot four.
Yeah, we were thinking about putting a conservation restriction on that, and maybe even restricting those areas as far as no structures that could be seen, you know, like the houses, try to profit them from 2A.
Now, that's the Cooper Farm right there, right?
Yeah, the Cooper Farm surrounds it.
Up to 2A?
Yes.
Now, Steve, the Cooper Farm incorporates a walkable path all the way around it.
That is correct.
Is there some, is there some way that you could incorporate some sort of a continuation of the path out to both?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, I've met with Rick Finley, and so he's been to my office a number of times, and spoke on the phone. I've actually walked the parcel with Rick to incorporate the trails. So that is part of what we would be proposing as well.
And you've got a huge amount of wetland in there.
We have.
Yeah.
And that portion there will be protected with a conservation restriction, because we, we're in the natural heritage protection area. The species happen to be the blue-spotted salamander, so...
Somebody found one there?
Actually, they found so many that they considered taking them off the endangered species list, that's how many they found, so...
Wow, poor deep pockets that day, huh?
Interesting.
You said that out loud, right?
Yes.
Did, does anybody on the board have any questions?
I've got a question. Are you proposing to not build the cul-de-sac, is that what you...
That's what I would like to do. I mean, we'll do it if we have to do it, what we're thinking is, we'd like to do something that looks more...
Well, the only problem is if you don't build the cul-de-sac, then you don't have any frontage.
Right, so what we're suggesting is that we go through and we show the frontage. I mean, as a requirement for a subdivision over 10 acres, for the open space, so, you know, I mean, maybe we could do it that way.
So we've never weighed frontage, you always have to have frontage.
Oh, no, certainly, I understand that, but how do you do it with the open space?
You still have to have frontage on an approved roadway, not a shared driveway, it has to be actual frontage. You have no frontage here.
No, what I'm saying is that we would, on paper, we would do the subdivision.
Not on paper, you have to actually show frontage, you have to build it and have frontage on it.
Okay, then we'll do it that way.
The cul-de-sac.
We'll do the cul-de-sac.
Oh, that was my confusion, because if you do it this way, through all these little necks, and you can't make the actual block formula, and you have no frontage that way.
No, 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 I guess what I was saying is that we go through, show it on paper, just not construct the road that way, with a cul-de-sac.
No, you have to have frontage, you have to have a road with frontage.
But what he's saying, Mark, is S1 shows the cul-de-sac. And S1 on the front shows the proposed lots without the actual construction of the cul-de-sac, the four bay is still there. And it's, and what they're looking for is, you know, the cul-de-sac is a deeded cul-de-sac.
But it's not gonna build it.
It's like a paper road that never comes anything more.
But for appearances, you're meeting the intent of the open space and...
If it was an open...
That throws us into the barren thing.
Yep, and it throws us into the farm up on the end of Harvard Road. They had to actually build the road so they could have frontage, he's gotta build the road.
That's going down dangerous path, pal.
Okay, that's fine, we'll build the road.
So, the only, there's been one case when you haven't asked them to build the road, and that was Cobb, and that was 18 lots on 8 acres or whatever it was. It was extremely different situation. But you have done it that once.
Well, we've done it twice, actually, we did Rogers where he had the frontage on the roadway.
That's right.
Asked him not to build it on the roadway, he donated the frontage on the street and put a shared driveway in the back.
Right.
For how many lots?
Two.
Lots different.
Big difference, right, you have to, we've not weighed frontage, you have to build frontage. And it has to be a regular monumental, five or six. And...
What did we, what we did...
You still have to have, you have to have a frontage road, you can't do...
But don't they reduce the frontage, I mean, on the open spaces?
You can.
You can, but you still have a road.
Mr. Marsh, have you considered doing a 13D sprinkler system in the house's setback to satisfy the fire department?
No, we haven't, we haven't, but that's an intuitive approach, so...
Ah.
What's that?
13D is a residential sprinkler system installed in a house?
Yeah.
Before.
So, the distance sum of these driveways is significantly longer than normal, so I was thinking that protect the homes, we might want to look at...
That's what they did up on the...
Harvard, Harvard, the hill there.
Just that lane, if the houses were gonna be over certain seats.
You said you had a condition of approval from natural heritage, so you could show where the corridors are gonna be and everything else like that in regard to the house's later proposal.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you'll stay out of those.
Yes.
And there's big setbacks, are you meeting those setbacks? 750 feet?
Well, that's just a, that's, they're requirements, it isn't actually 750 feet, it's not required, that's what they suggest.
Okay.
But we are well beyond that, and is part of the arrangement that we made with natural heritage, and I've been dealing with them for three years on this project. So, we're fine with them, we think we can accommodate.
How long is the cul-de-sac?
It's less than 750.
Well, does anybody on the board have any issues or any comments? Informal discussion?
I guess the other, the only other question is, with the five lots, if I construct the road versus doing an open space, that's fine. Okay, great.
In this, in this location, I think it works, because it's so far back off and it leaves open space everywhere on every lot. Oh, go ahead, Peter.
How much is the Cooper Farm irrevocable trust, how much land is in that one, that's connected right to that?
Oh.
That's not the one that's up for sale, that's part of it?
No, that abuts us, yeah. Yeah.
And the fourth lot, four and five, and you have some area behind four, which is fairly substantial, but the little line between here.
We were aware of the Cooper Farm on the periphery as far as what their intent was to develop that. And we wanted to create a buffer away from them, so that was our intention. But we have been recently open to working with them as part of their project.
Gotcha.
Connect the two?
That's what's been suggested, you know, we haven't...
A walkway right through, yeah, a walkway.
And they could just go...
Bike path.
Conservation, you're talking about a road all the way through.
Road.
Bike path.
Okay.
Road. Turning the road.
That's what, but we, you know, we don't want to be subject to any of that, to be, you know, we're gonna move forward with our five-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
And leave it at that, I don't want to end up, because I've, I'm kind of tended, but I've been down this road before in front of this planning board for abutting properties and what have you, I'm in a different position this time.
Yeah.
We control what's going on there before we didn't, so...
Well, as the Cooper property moves forward, might, the consideration of having some sort of bike way.
Yeah, so that's, you know, we're open to that.
With the cul-de-sac, we lose the open space, but with the...
Yeah, we'd lose the open space with the cul-de-sac, for sure, yeah. But the open space is mostly wetland.
Yeah. Well, not all of it, the upland portion, it's not, there's quite a big portion that's the uplands that are open, behind lots four or five.
Does anybody from the public have any comment on this? Or, we don't have drawings that we could pass around, we could send these out? Or just leave on a table there? Does anybody?
The only other question I have then is, keeping it a private road, which is what we prefer, that's, I don't know how the highway department feels about that.
Jim, do you have any issue with that?
What, less work and I don't have to do anything, yeah.
I love it, that's great.
Home sooner. All right, if there's no comment from the public, and there's no more comment from us, we've got to have all our input.
Great, I'm up again, just real fast, I'll for Nagard Hill Road, please.
We're getting double-headed tonight.
This will be fast, because you've already answered most of my questions.
Fire away.
So, okay, so Nagard Hill Road.
1214 Nagard Hill Road.
This is a 37-acre crossroad.
Let's see, do you want to give some background?
You own both of these?
Yes.
Do you want to give some background on this?
We just purchased this property about a month ago.
From?
Sarah Seaworth. And what we're proposing is we can do, we'd like, but we can do six lots, but you've already answered my question, so we have to do the road to do the six lots, so I guess that's probably what we'll do.
Well, actually, on this one, it's a different, different place, different conditions?
Yeah, definitely different conditions, but well, actually, similar conditions, I mean, I still have to deal with natural heritage.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That's huge on this one. But again, we, our plan is to donate, we're gonna do four 1-acre lots and two 5-acre lots, and then we're back portion going up towards Cobb. And again, I've been working with Finley and Conservation Trust on this.
Yeah.
Donate over 20 acres to the Conservation Trust on the back portion, keep everything kind of pushed up towards the front.
With or without the open space plan? With or without the open space plan?
No, just a conventional subdivision, yeah, that's, yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah.
How far is the cul-de-sac from there?
It's less than 750 as well, I think it's six something, 700.
So is this, is it off, is it the Berry Bush Lane?
It's just, I think it's just north of that, but we're at the one point.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a beautiful piece of property.
Did this land go into acting as well?
No, no.
You know, maybe we ought to entertain an open space plan on this, too.
We got a proposal. Soil testing's been done, it was done before the purchase.
A lot of wetlands there, isn't there?
This is...
Yeah, the soil testing's been completed, so where they dug, it was actually, the material was actually pretty nice.
A lot of wetlands, too, right?
Yeah, yeah, but there's, there's an open order of conditions on it that was never closed out, done a number of years ago. So the wetlands have been done, there was a study prior to our purchase for, wildland habitat study was done by OPO. So that was a one-year study. So we're pretty confident where we are with respect to it.
Is this above the Yap property?
It does, it abuts, it does, you know, there's a lot of conservation land and trust lands in there, and that's why, when I was talking to Mr. MacGyver and Finley... when I was talking to Mr. MacGyver and Finley, we wanna kind of patch that in, so this will connect, because it's not far from Cobb Pond as well.
Boy, that would be nice.
Yeah, it's a great piece.
Yeah. So, is anybody opposed to entertaining an open space plan on this?
No.
Terrific.
Yeah, but we can do that conventionally, too, and still get you. So, it doesn't matter to us if you want it open space, because we don't, we plan on only using the land, what limited portion of it that we need, and donating the rest. So, it ends up being over twenty acres.
Very little tree removal.
There's actually, there was a plan in place with the forester to, there's a forestry plan that was done before us, that I think is still gonna be done, but it's through the forestry people.
That's excellent. Great.
There's a management plan for this.
There is a management plan.
Does.
That's been filed with the state, with the state forest.
This is all we got for this.
Right.
What's the concept?
Does, does any, any of the board members have any more questions?
I think I know which way we're gonna go.
We have a question from Jimmy.
Do you have a timeline on when you would work on this project?
Well, we'll start engineering it tomorrow. We'll start on it, so, open in the fall, maybe in the winter.
Do you have a plan to work on Negoad Hill Road? The plan is in place now, I mean, we're working on the active design plan, and if we construct the road, it'll be a five-year warranty on digging, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna do wells anyway, I'm not gonna use the town water for actually any of these, because the fees are up to, you know, seven thousand dollars. I'd rather drill a well.
Individual wells?
Yeah, individual wells.
Water for fire suppression, I guess?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, I'm gonna do it thirteen year.
Because you can fill, you can store the water in that.
So, that's the plan.
Store the water in the house?
Yeah.
For a suppression system?
Yes, four hundred gallons, and you're good to go. Four hundred for two head stemminators.
Yeah.
It's just a lifesaving, it's not a structure saving. It's just like, it's just enough to escape, it's not a structure.
They're pretty particular with.
Person run.
So, does any, is, are there any comments from the audience, from the public? Great, Steve, you're off and running.
All right. See you later.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we're moving right along here. Let's see. Oak, let's see, eight fifty, we're past eight fifty. Two Pickard Lane, Oak Meadow Montessori Site Plan modification. Do we have somebody here?
We do.
Oh.
Jesse Johnson, David Ross and Associates, and also some representatives from Oak Meadow.
Oh, great.
Barbara Brady.
Oh, welcome.
Give me a minute, I'll sit after.
Sorry to keep you guys late, but.
It's dinner.
You have two plans tonight? Everybody, everybody before you had two plans.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm all, I'm one tonight. Actually, I'll start with that. And also, yeah, hand out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I could take two here. I guess two I could. It's not.
Thank you. Do you wanna pass one around?
Sure. Anyone else here for tonight's?
Sure.
I'll leave some more here, if anybody wants. So, tonight, we're before you for modifications to the Oak Meadow school. I'll give you an overview first of what the existing facility looks like. So, they were before you back in two thousand for modification to the site.
Yeah.
At that time, they had proposed building addition, and also they had a smaller parking lot. They increased their parking size to accommodate more faculty, also for functions that were gonna happen at the new addition, and then also some overflow for, for bigger functions. So, the way the site looks now is what was approved back in two thousand. You, you have a main entrance comes in, it's got a one-way circulation around to pick up and drop off, the main entrance into the building here, and then after that pickup and drop off occurs, they cycle back out of the site and a one-way out back onto Pickard Lane. What they found.
Excuse me for a second?
Sure.
Can you guys take that outside, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
What they found, after they had the site constructed, were in use for a while, they have their main entrance for the kids that aren't old enough to be picked up and dropped off, where they actually have to be escorted in by the parents. They have the parking area for those parents and those kids over in this region, they have to get out and then walk through an entrance over here. And they saw it as just a safety issue potentially, where you have the cars cycling through the same area where you have the, the parents walking the kids in. So, they, they thought maybe a way to improve it, improve that situation would be to take out this center island and put in a one-way circulation, to basically bypass a section of their parking area that could be designated for the, the parents that come in and have the kids that they have to walk in or walk out. Also, at the same time, where the overflow parking area is shown over in this region, they were finding that that was becoming a maintenance issue over time. You have to have it plowed off, it would have accumulation of sand and debris. They have lawn area over here that they really were utilizing for recreation for their kids, and it was just getting a high level of traffic, and it's essentially just an open dirt area that was, they were having a hard time maintaining grass. So, with those couple of programmed things and needs, they, they approached us and said, what do you guys think we can do here? And what you have before you is what we came up with for a solution for them. So, as I mentioned, they, creating the one-way circulation out directly for the pickup and drop off was able to be accommodated by just cutting back some of the existing curbing here, and then essentially taking out the center island that was here, landscape island, creating the one-way traffic out, redoing islands to, to frame that exit out, and then just modifying the parking to get back the parking spaces that you would lose by creating that travel lane out. We also created a, a traffic way, a pedestrian traffic way through here with stop control, so that if anybody was parking on the other side or through here, they would have a nice, easy walk-through, whereas before, that wasn't shown in the original proposed plan back in two thousand. But then also, we have a stop control that was created over on this side, so we just created a more defined parking and traffic circulation pattern through here that really increases the safety for the pickup and drop off. Also, though, to, to take care of their overflow parking situation, we had a dual-purpose basketball court that's gonna be created. It's gonna be pavement, so it'll function during the day for the kids to have a, an area they can stripe out for different recreation, but for events, that will double as overflow parking. So, we, we designed it to fit at least eighteen spaces, and then we also have tying into that a spot for ten permanent spaces. So essentially, what we did is we transferred twenty-four overflow that were on grass prior, and took twenty of those and put it on a hard surface, something that we can now actually treat with stormwater control. It's better, obviously, to have vehicles on a hard surface that you can do the stormwater conveyances with. So for that, we designed a rain garden that will pick up all the runoff from the new impervious surface, and that will also even function for potentially educational programs at the school. They could teach the kids about, you know, the plants that are in there, what they're doing, how they're treating some of the runoff. So it provided kind of a dual purpose for them. Also, we proposed to move the, the fire access. It was kind of a larger swing out away from the building to tuck that a little bit closer to the building. That opened up area to, to do a more defined soccer fields, but also even a small grass area adjacent to the basketball court that could be used for other recreational things. So, all in all, it was really just a project to improve their outdoor programs, the recreation programs for the kids, and improve some of the site's safety. There is no proposed modifications to the building itself, it's all strictly outside, and it was more shuffling around parking spaces. There's only a net increase in impervious for the whole project of just under seven thousand square feet, but we did add in a drainage feature that more than mitigates that, and even some of the existing impervious that wasn't getting mitigated, we're picking that up, too. So we feel it's a dramatic improvement from what's there now.
What is your impervious now? Do you know?
The impervious now is thirty-six percent lot coverage for the, the pavement and the building, so we're gonna still be around forty percent, you're allowed up to sixty.
Yeah. Does the, do the radiuses, have you tested the radiuses for the fire truck?
Yes, yeah, we have thirty-foot radius on this inside over here, that's the same as the Mass Highway standard for major intersections. And then also, I did sit down with the fire department prior to doing this and ask them about this, this access way through here, if they were okay with it, and we did go back and forth, and they said as long as they have at least fourteen feet of paved surface, and then on the outside for the outriggers, we've proposed on our detail to have three feet of reinforced turf, so it's gonna have a gravel base, the same you would, you would have under pavement.
Geogrid.
But just gonna have loma on top of that. So, something that's structurally fine for the outriggers to go out, but the wheel traffic will be able to go on the paved area.
And you're only a story high over there, aren't you?
That's it.
For two.
Yep.
Does the board have any questions or recommendations?
Can you build a bigger sports and playground field and make it turf and make some soccer nets and so?
There has been consideration of how we can sort of meet our needs and the towns as well, but that would obviously be next steps.
Well, let's just take a big step now.
A big step now. I think, yeah, the school's not, and I'm not the head of school, I'm on the Board of Trustees, I know on long-term plans, I've spoken with the head of school about those sorts of things, obviously, funds are an issue, and whether one would want turf or something else, but, but part of the, part of the win-win here is that right now, we had a field that was not really effective parking or effective field, and so the first step was to kind of bifurcate those to have more effective park escape, to be able to better maintain the field.
I was just.
An ultimate goal is to have better field space, and, you know, if something the town wants as well, then that makes us even here.
Yeah, and I see the, it's, it's basically in better safety circulation, better circulation for the safety of the kids, drop off and pickup, that's a big thing.
Yeah, I mean, the, the youngest children are two point nine, and it goes, the school goes to grade three.
Yeah.
So you really have two very different dynamics of, of traffic in the parking lot, and so one of, one of the primary goals, as Jesse said, is to separate those functions.
Yeah, I build schools, so I'm very sensitive to that.
Does your, does your plan show elevations, or can you provide elevations to the drainage, to the proposed rain garden?
We do, we have a detailed sheet that actually has full profile shown, it's in the plan set that I submitted, and it gives an idea of typical plantings for it, and also tells you the soil strata that you're gonna have.
Okay.
Again, the drainage report went to Cory at the water department, he reviewed it, had a few requested changes, and Jesse made those changes. We did get an estimate from Brain to review it, but given that, this is a fairly minor site plan modification, I didn't automatically ask him to start it. Just wanted to double-check with you if you want a review also.
Yeah, I don't see any need for additional site plan, not site, the.
Peer review.
Yeah, peer review. Does anybody else on the board see a need for it? Good, so we'll, we'll pass the peer review.
Yeah, I think where we have Cory to look, he's able to look in detail at some of the sites, it's really helpful.
It really is, we, we didn't have that resource before.
Right. And we did get comments from more, other boards and departments that included those in your packets.
Yeah.
Like Jesse said, he had addressed some with the fire department, the, the access already.
It seems you've got almost everything in order here. Do we?
What are our motions?
Well, we, we could approve this tonight if we wanted to. Do you see any, any issue, Mark? Moving it forward to approve?
They've always been great to deal with, they've done everything with ass, and they've done a nice project.
I think so, too. So what, in order to approve this, Mayor, and tonight, what would we need, need to do?
It's, the only application is a site plan modification.
Okay. And we have the.
Approve their site plan, Matt.
We have the decision in front of us here.
Yeah.
Note will be added to plans, the walkways in emergency egress will be maintained and kept open and clear.
Yeah.
Anything else on the site plan? You'll, if it's a modification, the original has the language about no salts and stuff like that.
This isn't a special permit.
Oh, we're not, yeah.
For a water resource.
Yeah, we're not in water resource either.
Plan or site plan, no, pretty basic item, no problem, I think we should approve it right now.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comment from the public?
Too late for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good to go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
It'd be nice.
Hurry back.
That was great. Good luck, good luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Move it on, boy.
Next, we have Taylor Street.
Still thirty minutes behind schedule.
Ah, that's.
Pick it up.
Taylor Street, Chuck Bell, Neshoba Lock. Is he here? Oh, there you are. That's right, Neshoba's Security.
Let's talk.
Could you give us some, some background on what you're, what you're doing?
Hey, you guys, I'm pretty sure, do you guys have a, the print layout? Yeah, that's it. I'm not a builder, I'm not a developer, I'm here, initial, get some response from you guys. The property I purchased in the middle of the winter with the expectations that the post office was gonna leave on December thirty-first this year. They came, I was gonna move my business over there, and they came back and said that they wanted to entertain another five-year lease with a ten-year option, because they having a problem in the center of town with parking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we've kind of been going back and forth, and talked to the postmaster, I've talked to Roland, it is true, they're having a parking problem. So, I was kind of working with them, and I'm not gonna stay on Great Road, so I have to come up with a place to work out. Wanted to be in town. So I bought this property. So my dilemma is, you know, do I accommodate them, do I not? Even if I was to move in there, I need a place for my business that's on a slab. I need some kind of place where I can work on the safes and vaults, that has a wooden structure with a basement, I can't bring the safes and vaults in there. So I would have to come up with a second option somehow.
Note, Chuck, just for the people who watch it on TV, this is the old post office.
Yeah, and the depot.
Yeah, the depot.
Yeah.
That's where we're talking.
Yep. So, before I put anything, before I agree with the post office, I wanna come before So before I put anything, before I agree with the post office, I wanna come before you guys and see if I could actually put a structure there. What I, my intentions are, is the shop that I have on Great Road, I've got prices to pick it up, move it, put it on a foundation and back there. I've got two options where I could tuck it and back. So Roland was giving me some ideas about what I should do and make sure I have enough parking spots. So using the equation of 250 square feet for office, I was just, I'm not an engineer, like I said, you know, there's like thirteen, 13.5 spaces needed. There's eighteen spaces now, not counting the street side. There's a couple out there. So that was like the first step. Come to you guys. Before I go spend all the money and have it engineered and do whatever, I wanna get you guys as your input and see if it's even viable. It is, it is not a big rush, but there is a timeframe, drop-dead point with the post office before they say we have to find another spot. Well, their intentions is if they don't, they're gonna move the whole operation to the center of town. I don't know.
How they gonna move everything to the center of the town when you don't have the parking now as it is? And then if you turn around and you do a lease with them, then it kind of negates you having enough room and they're needing parking in addition, correct?
We're not discussing the post office's issues.
Well, it's his issue is what he's asking.
Well, it is his issue, as far as how I, my next step is...
We're looking at the site plan to see if we think that you could fit another building in the back end of that site.
Correct.
Yeah. I didn't see any issue with it. Mark or Jerry, do you see any issue with it?
Two hundred and forty square feet, that's your proposal.
The building is thirty-four by twenty-six, which is seventeen hundred square feet. And I wanna tuck it right up to the side of the pavement. I can actually, so with the impervious, I can put it in the pavement, but I prefer not to, and I, you know, you don't wanna take away parking spots.
You mean the offset requirement?
No, not the offset requirement of impervious.
I don't know, for placing the building on the lot.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of offset, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You mean all your setbacks.
Both ways. That's actually to scale that drawing.
So the dotted line that we see on the drawing here is a setback?
Nope.
No, you've got ten-foot siding rear, so we should be fine with that. It's also either rock for a water resource district, whatever shows up on the map there.
It is a water resource district, right? Yes, you mean impervious?
I don't know.
I'm an engineer, so I don't know.
That's the other requirement, you can go over impervious.
All right, so I have to get with an engineer and have the calculations done.
You'll have to, it's not difficult.
You have to do a full, I mean, you just gotta do the math for what your coverage is gonna be.
And see, you may, you may be close, you may be special permit, but if you're on a parking lot, that doesn't change it. If you're off the parking lot, then maybe there's some special permit.
Well, it could cost you money to stay with the special permit requirements. All right, well, what's the next step if it doesn't meet that requirement now? Not saying it doesn't, I just don't know.
You'd have to pay an engineer to make it meet the requirement.
All right.
So that's what I'm saying.
So let's sign out first before I come.
It could be the additional site work, it could be...
Do I have to wait for another meeting? Well, let's say they want at least a four-month buffer from December 31st, so what's that put us in? August, August, right? December, yeah, in August. So can I kind of figure out if I get this engineered, talk to you guys again, whether it can get approved by August? Or do I let them know and go ahead and put my own building, or put my shop there and figure out where I do my safe and vaults? I don't know how the steps go and the procedures follow, so I'm kind of asking you guys.
Right, oh, I'm happy to work with you on that.
All right.
Get it in front of the board when they need to see it.
Well, how many times a year do you have a meeting? Every quarter?
Every month.
No, every month.
Every month.
Yeah.
Well, you could do the impervious yourself. I mean, you could take the square footage of the lot, put the buildings on it, put the parking on it.
Just do the calculation.
That's it, it's just math.
It's a seventy-thirty, right? It's a ratio.
Natty, or you'd be thirty percent, right?
Right, but if the existing impervious is over thirty percent, then what you guys have done in the past is if there are site improvements that somehow...
Regenerates the water.
Cleans the, some of the runoff, provide a rain garden or drain and spill or whatever, because I don't think there's any of that there right now.
That's right, that's right.
Then you have allowed, you do have to go through the special permit process, but you do that at the same time you do the site plan.
Okay.
So you might have to hire an engineer to get...
But I mean, you can get a rough idea when you're on.
Yeah, and then decide on my own whether I need to get the engineer.
You went to Rhode Island High School, right? You can do the gazettes. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So a rain garden might actually allow you to get higher than you are right now. Because you're picking up the water runoff that's not being treated right now.
I didn't wanna put my cat before the horse until I talked to you guys.
Yeah, no, it sounds, to me, it sounds workable. Jerry?
Yeah, it's totally viable. Yeah, if the number's right, and if you do have to mitigate it, then you probably won't need an engineer for it.
Peter and Ed?
No.
All set, go away.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, next, informal discussion, 529 King Street. Virginia Wood, you're back.
Thank you so much for letting us meet with you informally. As you know, I have owned the property at 529 King Street.
Yes.
For about twenty years. And we opened in November. I'm running Gallery 529, which is a gallery, and we also offer workshops for adults and children. And Gwen Vivian has been running Act Three, which is a really wonderful restaurant of Mediterranean food and live music. And it has been a really wonderful experience working together and doing this. It's coming off of a very long winter, not to mention some extraordinary legal and architectural fees just to get our doors open. So now what we do, now that the good weather has finally hit, is we'd really like to be able to have outdoor seating on the patio, which is something that we've had. When I ran Ken's American Cafe, we had it. When Tre Amici rented, they had it. And when you look at the Google Maps from aerial views, you can see that the umbrellas from Ken's was there. So it's nothing that's new, and it was basically an oversight when we came before you last summer that we didn't color in that area for the outdoor seating. So our hope is tonight that you can agree with us that this is not a substantial deviation from the original site plan and help us out because we really would like to get going on the outdoor seating after the spring weather has arrived.
Now, let's see, you're in the Village Common District.
If you tell me I am, I will be, yes.
And then because, as Vivian went through the site plan modification last July, after the quick discussion, and she submitted the plans, it went through very quickly. As she noted, also noted, it does not show either the parking calculations or using that area for outdoor seating. So it's not on the site plans. I had to let Vivian know that if she got the plans in, we could do this all at this meeting rather than have the discussion, and then if we say they need site plan, do that at the next meeting.
I sent an email to Maron that showed the parking calculations. So we're actually still have one parking spot available based on our employees that we've had in the building and that added twenty new seats for the outdoor seating. So we still are over by one parking spot.
If you recall, your site plan review process is the process where you send it out to the other departments to get any input from them. It went very quickly last time. I don't know why it wouldn't go quickly again.
Yeah, do we even need to go that route? I wonder...
Well, why wouldn't you go that route? When your, bylaws say that if there's any changes to the approved site plan, you should go back. And I, to me, twenty seats, when they have, what, thirty-six now? Seems like a rather substantial change.
It does, but it does meet our intention of the overall, the Village Common District in terms of promoting pedestrian access and pedestrian use, yeah.
And it's, and my reading on the site plan, and obviously you guys know it heck of a lot better than I do, but I mean, I think the terminology is substantial deviation. I guess, I don't see twenty additional seats, and we've got forty-four seats, right?
We have forty-four seats.
As a substantial deviation from what has been there for twenty years and what we had approved last time.
The Board of Health should have a chance to look at it, do whatever they can.
I wrote to the Board of Health several days ago, well, I wrote to him.
Go, Ricky.
Go, Ricky. I wrote to him and laid out our situation, how we were looking to reopen a patio that had been licensed in the past, and he, when we talked about the parking lots, how there were enough spaces, and how we're substantially smaller restaurant now than Tre Amici or Ken's were in the past. He simply said, you should notify Bridgette. So I wrote to Bridgette, and I haven't heard back from her yet.
Yeah.
To say, what do you, what do you need from us? Because I think their major concern is septic, and the building's licensed for ninety-eight occupancy. So we're at forty-four, we're asking for sixty-four. There are people who browse the gallery, but we really, it's difficult for us to anticipate that there'd be thirty people browsing the gallery at any time, because really, the gallery is mainly browsed by the customers of the restaurant, and that's how we feed each other, other than the small art openings that we have or the small classes that we have. But the idea that there would be ninety-eight people in that building is hard to conceive of and easy to prevent.
Well, the, wasn't that patio used in the past for outdoor seating?
Yeah, it was, and it went through approvals before, and the condition before, when it was a ninety-nine space restaurant, was when the outdoor patio was in use, the indoor room that was a similar size would be closed. We would not use that.
But they're far below the ninety-eight.
But it went through the process. Question is, how do you get input, how do you get input from fire department on any access issues without going through the site, if you don't go through the process?
We have, we have talked to the fire department, and the fire department did respond in an email to Gwen.
Well, no, it was, I wrote to Scott, and Scott sent it to Keith, and Keith wrote back to Scott and said...
And that's the process. Site plan review is the process.
All right, so...
What's the ask?
They're asking to not do a site plan review for this change.
Because the cost of the modification at this point in time after the already extraordinary architectural and legal fees, just to get our doors open, not to mention having to get architecturally drawn plans, because that's my understanding.
No, that's not correct.
No, this is, we're just looking to have the question you've asked us to be asked to the fire department, the Board of Health, any other boards that would need to review, the building department would wanna see it, and then come back to us for approval.
You should be in our technical area, those things.
No additional information needed other than what you've asked here tonight.
So, but we still have to pay the modification site plan.
Three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
So...
We can take it out.
What do we have on this?
You have that, and you have the letter that went with it that has the description of the parking areas?
With all the calculations.
With the calculations.
But where's the patio?
It's the, it's an incline area.
It's this, it's this area?
Yes, right in front of the building, yeah.
That's right. Great, it should pull in.
It's, you know, it's where we've had outdoor seating for twenty years and approved on Ken's American Cafe, which is my business, and then approved for Tre Amici. And we still need to go back to the Board of Health, because the other piece of business that we're asking for, like the license to be able to serve outside and to have, so that if we have a gallery opening, an art opening, someone can take their glass of wine and be able to wander from room to room and look at the art with a glass of wine rather than put it down and have someone else carry it to the next spot.
Yeah, they won't schedule the alcohol service meeting until we get this process.
Well...
Wine always comes hand in hand. You gotta get drunk to buy something, is that what it's... Appreciate it, I don't...
You'd have to stop by and see, and we'll give you a glass of wine, and you can figure it out for yourself.
I don't like wine, too.
We even have...
I do like our...
Their beers, too. Same thing.
So, so does, this is a, this is a very minor modification, I'd see. I see this as a minor modification. What's the consensus of the board? Do we wanna put these people through a full site plan review, a minor site plan review, or no site plan review at all? Jerry?
I think it would be very impolite to not have it passed around to those boards and get their input.
Now, passed around? You're talking a written plan or just the description?
We are right here. Pass it around, see if anyone's got any comments, issues?
So no more work needed from these gals, then?
They're not modifying the site. They're just, they omitted that part of the site when they first filed. Now, the law of use, I'm not sorry, I said, just pass around, see if anyone's got an issue with it, call again.
Mark?
Same thing, I think you should send it around, let everybody know what is the agreement.
Peter and Ed, all right. Sounds fair.
Can I, can I push just one little tiny bit harder? And that is to, so that we're good to go tonight, and then when we go before the Board of Selectment, make sure that it's gone through all the departments, and then take it up for the Board of Selectment, because we're just looking at the nice weather going by, that's all.
It doesn't seem like you can have an issue.
They wanna start using the patio after their visit to the Board of Selectment, instead of coming back in a month.
No, they're not gonna get in front of the Board of Selectment until they get the site plan.
Right, they're waiting for you.
So they've gotta go back.
I still, I wouldn't.
You still want the...
Yep, send it around, we're done.
All right, the, we don't need a, does this?
No motion, informal discussion.
Yeah.
So will you send your own, or should we?
I'll do.
Maron will.
Maron.
Right.
Work with Maron on this.
Right, I'll need the application fee, and we can, if you wanted to submit any additional information, we can, I was gonna put the existing site plan along with the letter that you provided and the sketch of the area, and call that the application and send that out to the other boards and departments.
That's pretty informal.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
I think there's no other way around it. Yeah, and it's about as straightforward and informal as it can possibly be here. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley.
But we'll see you next...
There we go.
June 11th. All right, thank you.
Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Lily.
I byted it.
All right.
Oh, yeah, did you?
Yeah.
Sixteen years ago.
Nine years.
Now, here we are.
Like in the nineties into two thousand and five.
Yeah. Are you with these guys?
Yeah, I'm Gwen's partner in the business here.
Orchards, nine thirty. Orchards, Macintosh Lane. Set the bond amount and lot release request for phase two. Wants to speak to that, if we got somebody here?
We've been, Peter DeCarolis.
Yep.
Very good. Peter, that's right.
Yes, yes.
You've been here before.
Yeah, I've been here a few times.
And the latest information came in, I don't know, a couple hours ago, and we've been working a lot on this.
So just here to get approval on the numbers that were provided for bonding the second phase of Macintosh Lane. Do we have anything?
That was the new...
Oh. The schedule, it was here when...
And actually...
This.
Mr. DeCarolis has a question about process. He would like you to vote on, to set the bond amount, and then as he gets work done and before he actually posts the bond with the treasurer, not to have to come back to you to go through those items, but just to have the op, have me work with Green International to go through and which items are done and can be removed from the bond. So it's kind of a contingent. The question is, you know, how much responsibility do you wanna give to me and to Green, and how much do you wanna keep to yourselves on this?
Jerry, do you have any issue with having Maron manage the rest of the...
For four years, it's, we've released it.
Good. And Mark?
I don't see any reason to change it.
Good. Peter and Ed?
It's been working, keep it working.
Yeah. So we're good.
Move on.
Okay, so for the bond amount numbers, I...
Here we are.
Yep.
The, one change from the paper that I gave you that we need to make is under item three, the power cable phone. Items three B, three C, and three D were duplicates from phase one, so those have already, the bond's already in place for those items, so we could remove those. Six, I mean, twelve thousand dollars off.
So that's twelve thousand, yeah.
And then plus, you know, twenty percent of that, so...
That's another hundred, fourteen hundred, right? Twelve, twelve hundred.
Four hundred.
So presuming the spreadsheet did right, comes down to three twenty-eight, two ninety?
Sorry, what was that?
Three twenty-eight, two ninety is when we take out those.
Yeah, that's right. Three twenty-eight, two ninety is the revised number.
So we're releasing that much?
No, this is to set, sorry, this is to set the bond. He would like that. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't explain that well, I was, I was so...
Peter would like to see that happen tonight, but no.
Peter's looking to post the, set the bond amount for phase two, the second half of the McIntosh Lane roadway.
This one is the one.
Now, Jimmy, are you okay with these numbers? Did you get a chance to see them?
Yes.
And they're realistic, they can, you know, something ever went down the tube, so...
Everything goes good in the first one?
Good.
Then I'm...
No issues? Not even little ones?
Alright, so we're good with Maren handling, we're good with the numbers, and we'll vote it and move on.
Alright.
Let's go.
Uh, Jerry, Mark?
One quick question, too?
Uh, Jesus. Let's go, go ahead.
I might need to do a favor for one of my customers out there, which would require A and R endorsement, and I know you're not meeting until June eleventh on the next meeting. Is there any chance, I'll know tomorrow if I'm going to need that, any chance of having a...
To approve an A and R?
One A and R?
Well, you can vote on Virginia Wood's meeting.
Uh, I think that's, that'd be a stretch for tonight.
Not, not tonight?
No, to add another meeting sometime between...
Oh, to add a meeting, yeah, yeah.
Right, before June eleventh. Um, and it would just be for this A and R, and I can't imagine anything else coming up between now and then, but...
Yeah.
If you want to poll the board and see if somebody wants to do it, then in none of the circumstances, see if they'll get Virginia Wood or...
Yeah, I think that would be great, so...
But only, how do you feel about it? You want to have another quick meeting one day? It has to be, what, at least a week from now, correct, to post it and do everything else?
Or maybe two. Correct?
Would two weeks work for you? Because that'd work for the site plan.
Well, you don't need four of us to show up anyways, right? So, I'm sure we can make it work.
I'm good.
What date you talking?
He's talking the...
May twenty-eighth.
May twenty-eighth, it's a Thursday.
Yeah.
So before you all commit to it, and I appreciate you...
Yeah, no, we're good, so...
Considering that, but before you do, I just need to talk to my customer first thing tomorrow morning, and my engineer, just to make sure that they...
Where is this at?
The actual plan, so it's in my self-provision.
Yeah.
So why do you need an A and R?
You want to hold, it'll take me a few minutes to explain.
So why am I here?
Read his digest, you got two minutes.
Alright, so where the access road is, in McIntosh Lane, there's an access road coming from where the apartments are in the townhomes. So lot two is on one side of that. I've sold that home, and now that they see how close the access road is to their house, if we could bend it a bit, and it requires my future customer for lot one, who I haven't sold the house to yet, but we're under agreement, it requires them to, give them a little sliver of land off of there.
So it's a little more than just an A and R, you have to basically show us...
So lot one, I have to...
Changes to the subdivision, so it's a little more than coming in here.
Redrawing, in other words.
Yeah, it is, yeah, yeah, it's, so lot one gets reconfigured by five hundred fifty square feet, and then we're going to give that to, um, our...
Two weeks.
Whatever the, it's a little more than just, uh, it's part of the subdivision, it really, well...
It's part of the open space special permit.
Yeah, it's really...
That would be up to you to allow, whether or not you want to allow an A and R on the top of that special permit.
It's a little more than a five-minute meeting, if that's not a problem.
But we can get it done in one night, if it works, the numbers work.
If you're talking, if you're talking the twenty-eighth, I may, I'm, I'm gone that week anyways. I may or may not be back that night, it depends on when I win.
We don't need a supermajority on this, do we?
No, A and R needs three.
Yeah.
Two for A and R, top of it.
But it's more than A and R.
But it's really an A and R, that's the point.
It's more than A and R, if it's a revision of the subdivision special permit, how many would we need? Would we need off forty-four?
But then, then if you would require it to go that right, you'd have to notice it and have a public hearing to modify.
And that's more than two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
So your SOL.
Yeah, it's a little, just to point it out.
If you're going to want to do that, I think it needs to be posted.
Yeah.
You know, you really want this done right. You want this done right, you don't want...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't want anything wrong with this afterwards.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion on the bond amount of three twenty-eight, two ninety? Or six, six ninety, is it? No, three twenty-eight, two ninety.
So move.
We have, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Um...
Alright.
So I understand, um, no lot releases until it comes back to you? Or once he sets, once he posts the bond for...
Yeah, once you post it.
See, here we go.
Then you need to vote lot releases, contingent on the bonds, bond being posted. And you have to allow me to work with Green to do the reduction.
Okay.
I need your direction on it.
Then we should entertain a vote to allow Maren to release the lots based on Green's?
No, set the bond amount.
Set the bond amount?
Yeah.
Reduction.
Not a bond release, but reduce the bond amount based on input from Green for the work that's been completed.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on what, on just what Maren just said.
Second.
Do you guys even know what you're voting and seconding?
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's Maren that can handle it.
Maren, you're going to set the, you're going to set the bond amount, okay? Then that, that allows you to release the lots that are associated with that bond. So do you want to vote, do you have the specific lots that you want to release?
Yeah.
So that's what you're voting on it, once we get the money...
After, I'm happy that I have the authority to do that process, then, um, I have, ask you to vote the lot releases.
Do you have the lot numbers?
Seven through eighteen.
Okay.
And again, once the bond is... We don't, we'll release.
Alright, one more vote.
You guys will vote to release them, and then I'll draw them up and have you sign them, you know...
So we're going to vote to allow Maren to release the lot, seven through eighteen, once we get the coal guide cash in a passbook loan, not a, not a bond, right?
Um, they do a check now and set up a separate account, treasurer sets up a separate account.
Okay.
You good with that?
Good, that's a motion?
So move.
Got a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So move, wait, so move, that's second.
Alright. See you, see you in two weeks. Oh, no, it's a month.